Meeting for Tuesday, March 3rd. Shannon Erdman, our chair, is not here tonight, so I will be, Rachel Fitzgibbon, will be presiding over tonight's meeting. And I want to thank 1623 Studios for being taking. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, do we have any public comment? Nope, okay. I'm gonna keep us moving because we have a full agenda. So, oh, I forgot to do mine. Okay, Chairman's report. I did check in with Shannon earlier. All of you received a Massachusetts Association of School Committees policy newsletter in the mail, and we have a new public comment policy that we will be implementing at future meetings. So basically, the main difference that we could discern is that it's, there's going to be a sign-up sheet for people as they're walking in, individuals who want to speak at the meeting. So we will be implementing that probably, hopefully, at our next meeting. We haven't met since February 4th, so we have a lot to cover tonight. And I see we have a new student reporter. So would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Lucas. I'm a sophomore.
Can we go around and introduce ourselves to each other who we are?
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay, Lucas, I'll start off. I'm Rachel Fitzgibbon, I'm vice chair.
Nice meeting.
Ken Warnock, a Manchester member of the school committee, and Lucas Shan from robotics.
Cool. Annie?
Annie Cameron Essex.
Hey, I'm superintendent.
I'm Avi, I'm the business manager.
Nice to meet you.
How are you?
Good, are you?
Good.
Gail Hunter, secretary.
I'm Sarah Wolf. I'm from Essex. You probably know Alexander from Robax.
I do.
My daughter married us, graduated last year.
Yeah, she was in my sister's grade.
Hi, Lucas, I'm Eric Burke. I'm a Manchesterer. Nice to meet you too.
So, Lucas, thank you for stepping up and volunteering.
No problem.
It's great to have you.
Thank you.
So, do you want to tell us a little bit, you said you're a sophomore?
I am, yeah. So should I just, like, talk about?
Sure.
Okay, so, some of the things that are going in, that are going on in the school right now, winter sports, the winter sports season just concluded. The boys' basketball team made it to the playoffs, but we unfortunately lost to Georgetown. There was a very good effort seen from the boys' team. Last week, there was a DECA competition that took place in Boston. Our school did attend. A total of nine students qualified for internationals. And this year, internationals will be in Nashville. And two of the nine students that qualified were first-year DECA competitors, so big congratulations to them. This year, we were very successful in the Drama Fest, which is very exciting. For the first time in nine years, MIRHS has moved on past the preliminary round, and so we'll be attending the semifinals for the first time in nine years, which is awesome. And then, so the semifinals for Drama Fest will be on March 14th. The Sixth Annual Cape and Career and College Fairs also coming up. It'll take place on Wednesday, March 11th, at Gloucester High School, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. It's just a really good opportunity for students, especially sophomores, to kind of learn about a possible career that they're interested in pursuing. So, yeah, it's a great opportunity. Math team will be competing in its final competition of the year this Thursday at Wilmington High School. Science team will be competing at North Andover High School next Tuesday, which is the second-to-last competition of the year. So, yeah, that much wraps it up.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
That was very complete, and you really brought us a well-rounded report.
Thank you.
Fantastic. And you were on the robotics team?
I was last year.
Oh, okay.
And this year, I just continue to.
Yeah. Okay, awesome. Well, thank you so much for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Lucas?
Lucas, my big question is, are kids getting my annoying emails about taking the strategic planning survey?
I think they are, yeah. I've received it.
Okay, good. Did you do the survey, though?
I did, yeah.
Good job. Good answer.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
No problem.
All right, thanks so much, Lucas. And at this point, you're welcome to stay, or if you've got stuff going on, and you're pretty busy, you can adjourn.
I think I'll stay.
But, yeah.
Awesome.
And you can, you know, we go till about 8:30, so if at any point you need to leave, just feel free.
Sound soon.
Yeah, but thanks so much for being here.
No problem.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, let's see, do we have a motion to approve the acceptance of the warrants?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. And that, let me just reiterate that that's January 7th, 28th, and February 4th. And I believe Gail sent out the updated minutes from that of the meeting. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Question passes. Okay, subcommittee reports.
Sorry to butt in, one more question. Are we all caught up now on minutes? Okay. I was losing track, so I threw in everything I thought we possibly missed.
You did them, they're all there.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Okay. Subcommittee reports, let's see, facilities, elementary facilities, and committee. Annie or?
Sure, we had a meeting last week. We are on budget and on time. We were reviewing some, some critical issues, the playground. We had been over budget and working on that to get it in line, and they did a great job of doing so, so we.
And what's, you're talking Memorial.
The Memorial School Playground, yeah.
Yeah, because we're talking, we have two playgrounds going on.
So you saw a presentation that we saw, it's in your packet, there are three different playgrounds, and there's some things that they wanted to switch out. Are you to show?
I'm having some technical difficulties, so keep looking.
Yeah, so, we had, were they, there are two elements, I think, that they wanted to switch out on two of the playgrounds, but we approved it pending those, those switch outs, but is on budget, which is great. There was another issue where we probably had talked to you about some concerns about stabilization of soils on the back end, where there's a staircase going out to the back field. When we had, that change order had come up, we had decided to do borings as opposed to pilings, and you're going to correct me when I'm going off track.
Yeah.
That was a less expensive and better solution.
Okay.
And they came in with the number on that, I think it was $58,000, which is, under contingency is good, so we're good there. And then FFND, which is if you tip the building over and you shake it, anything that falls is FFND. We are over budget on that by, I think, $124, and we're putting that out to bid to see if we can get, they, these guys have worked very hard to get a very, it's not, I don't want, it's, the budget is to take, have everything, but, but to be mindful of that everything that we are putting on the plan is what we really need. So, they've been working pretty hard on that for the past four or five months, and they think that they might see more savings if they put it out to bid. So we approved that, and we'll see in the next few weeks how that turns out, but again, this is all within contingency, so we had nothing but good news at that meeting. I know it's all budgeted and it's not very exciting, it doesn't show you anything, but to know that we're on budget and on time is pretty, pretty big. So, here are the playground designs, and Jake Foster is the school, is the school rep or the parent rep on that committee, and is also helping with the Essex Elementary Playground. So, this is the three-to-five playground, and those are the elements. I unfortunately really can't see, so, but I'm driving home tonight. There are slides and whatever. I think they're switching out one element on that, is it one on this one?
What, are you just?
Are you meaning three-to-five age or three-to-five grades?
Grade.
Grade three-five.
Yeah, important distinction.
Obviously. I'm like, that's not the.
Well, pre-K, we have a pre-K playground too, which is ages three to five.
Grade three to five. And then.
You keep flipping through here?
Yeah. This is.
The pre-K.
Pre-K.
For ages three to five.
Does that show, is it enter?
It's supposed to be a little, oh, yeah, it's on that spongy stuff.
Poured-in-place surfacing, is what you call it.
And it's supposed to be like a village.
That's a pick?
Yeah.
A village theme.
There's a little pathway around it, and we have some vehicles that also come with.
And then the next one is the.
Sorry?
One and two?
This is, yep, this is grade one, two, with the, it's hard to see, the lights are coming down. I think the one on the left. Yeah.
So those are all three? They're not situated like that? It's just something else that is.
Yeah, this way you can't quite see the ship, its head on, but this is kind of the bow and stern back there, and these, we're trying to get district logos on here, this is, those logos won't stay. And you can see some of the kind of oceanic themes reflecting our community.
I would say more maritime.
Oh, maritime, that is probably more apocalyptal.
I think you said the green-blue color scheme of insides.
Yes.
Last year.
And then this shows all of them, although they won't look like this because they're in different places.
Right.
This is all three, so you can get a sense of the scale.
What's the giant blue?
Circle? Let's draw a flinkle ball area.
Don't ask where that is.
Yeah, flinkle ball is a common outdoor research, recess game.
Excellent.
So, Annie, I have a, if you're open to questions?
Yeah.
All right, I have a quick question. So, as part of this budget, and maybe Avi, you can help with this too, I'm curious about any, I know landscaping and benches for parents to sit or caregivers, is that part of this budget, or is that part of the overall building budget?
That would be part of the landscape budget, and I'm not familiar with what benches will be where, to be honest, but then separate.
But we will have some around these spaces, right?
You know, I'd have to look to see where they're going to be situated, I don't want to say, because I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know that there's sitting areas.
Okay.
Around this, yeah.
And what else? The pre-K is enclosed and separate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but the others are open for public use?
Well, yes, it'll be enclosed, and it's also inside a, they're all different areas completely, different sides of the building.
But for, like, weekend use, they would all be accessible after hours, yeah?
And all accessible, too.
Accessible to all?
That's true, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks so much, Annie. Awesome. Finance committee, checked in with Shannon, they have not met since our last meeting, haven't had a collaborative session, unless there's any updates from anybody else. Okay, and policy committee, Pam and Eric, I owe you guys an email. I think the 2015 will work, so I will get back to you guys on that. We have a meeting coming up at the end of this month. And negotiation team. Ken and Sarah, any updates? Nope, no reporting?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so that moves us down to superintendent's report. Pam?
Sure. Unfortunately, I'm having a little technical difficulty, so.
You're emailing something.
It isn't, it's okay, I can just do it verbally. As you can guess, our lead topic tonight is COVID-19. We have been, we sent an advisory out on the 28th, which is ended last week, after consultation with state superintendent's organization, state DPH, Department of Ed, and some consult with the local DPH. That's pretty much our ongoing collaboration group for all decisions, and kind of overarching all the CDC. So at this point, we put out the initial notification last week, just as an advisory, because that's all we have. I think the theme I hear in all conversation is preparedness, not panic, that this is much like a major flu outbreak, and that is likely not deadly outcomes for the majority of people who contract it. So, all advice we're getting is to treat the situation like the H1N1, cleanliness, personal hygiene, and using good judgment when you feel like you have symptoms. If your kids have symptoms, if you present with symptoms, as a worker, please stay home until they're resolved or you're cleared by your doctor. Again, it's advice and encouragement, we really don't have a level of enforcement there. We are doing flu-level cleaning of the building, flu epidemic.
Flu season.
Flu season, level cleaning of the building. The CDC puts out a list of guidelines of what we should be following, those are the guidelines we're following. In some cases, we're upping our daily protocol, but again, nothing we haven't seen before. I think the big question we keep getting is school closure, when would you do that? And I don't think we'll be acting alone in that. Again, the entire protocol for identifying and substantiating COVID-19 passes through a chain of command where there's a local or a health provider identification, then it goes up the chain until you can actually get the kit and get the diagnosis and get that confirmed. So, we would get information back, and we would be in consult with either the local or the state CDC, if it's widespread enough, and take their expert advice on how we can combat it here. So, unless we had an instance where we had such a significant amount of staff all on home quarantine at the same time that we couldn't operate the building, that would be the only local decision I can see at this time, but I think this is just, it's in progress and it's ever-evolving, so that's what we're looking at at this point. So if it had anything to do with regional or localized outbreak, our guidance would come from people who are expert in the field. If it has to do with just not being able to operate the building due to lack of staff, we may be forced to make that decision at the local level. Communications would run the same way any of our emergency communications do, so if it's snow, it would be email, phone, post, if appropriate. I think the big thing we're working on is, if you're watching and tracking in the news, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts to this, and there's an outside chance that there's a regional shutdown or a recommendation for a state of emergency, so we're working on an educational continuity plan, which would allow us to deliver instruction at some level if people are homebound. Pretty, easy is the wrong word. There is a logical way to do it at the secondary, because we're, you know, such heavily into Google Classroom, so it's a matter of managing that and setting up structures, and the principals are working on that with their teams. I think the elementary, it's an ongoing discussion of what is developmentally appropriate at each level, and what can kids do independently versus relying on their parents to do. So I think that's going to be an ongoing conversation for us, but we are actively readying ourselves in case we have to shut the school for any long period of time. We're certainly, as much as we're planning and preparing, hoping that it doesn't come to that, that it's just more sensationalized in the news at this point. And then, resources for families, we're putting links out in any of our communications to the CDC and Department of Health. Those are the two best resources at this point, and it's likely that we're going to continue to get weekly updates, so if, if we have new information, we'll put an update out when there's something new to share with families. So that's our game plan on that. Happy to take questions or comments. And my other two things are just kind of fun updates.
Thanks for the update. I have a quick question. How is, I know you've been communicating out to the community, parents, caregivers, et cetera. How was, how are things being communicated? Are there, you know, how is it going with, like, kids in the classroom or teachers supplying? I know there's hand sanitizers around, I know the one I just tried to use was empty, but I know, I'm just saying, like, how is that being communicated? Are kids coming up with questions?
I'm going to turn this one to Lucas.
Is it mostly through the family network, you know, through their parents? How is that working out?
Is it, do you notice anything different or special in terms of discussions around COVID-19, or?
I mean, I think the students are, like, discussing about it, I think, I mean, some of the, few of the teachers are during class time, but overall, I'd say, like, not really, no.
I would say, in all honesty, for us, it's more prepared in case we shut down than having an ongoing daily discussion about it. I think at the elementary level, Jen can chime in if you like, you know, the nurses are always, during this time of year anyway, enforcing and reinforcing personal hygiene is good habit. So I think operationally, it's really no different than having a bad flu season at this point. I think what will change the nature of that is if we start to see a small outbreak of COVID-19 in this particular, in the Cape Town region, what the response may be may be bigger than what the need is, just because of the state of fear that the thing is going to spread. So, I think we're trying to balance maintaining normalcy, because it hasn't really impacted us on a day-to-day basis, but yet being prepared should escalate.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
I just have two other quick things. We had a delegation of 13 teachers, combination of teachers and principals, down in Yale, New Haven, this week for the first National Ruler Conference, and just a congratulations and shout-out to Principal Mayno. She, remember, she came and presented to us last summer on their implementation plan and how they gathered data for the implementation of ruler, and she served on a panel of middle school leaders on how to implement ruler effectively in her school. Here she did an outstanding job, as I was getting pictures madly back today, so maybe we can get those pictures up by the end of the day. So she was well-received, and initial reports out of the conference was it was a good use of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of positive, a lot of positive information about how we can do things better, and it's also nice to know that we're seen as a leader in the field. So I think you'll be hearing more about that as the year goes on. Next meeting, I will have the calendar, the 2021 calendar for you, but I had just a couple of key dates, if anybody is interested. First day of school for students will be September 2nd. Holiday break will be the 23rd through the 4th, with the 23rd likely a half day. Winter break will be February 15th to the 19th, and I can email this to you, so you don't have to write it down.
Thank you, please.
And spring recess will be April 19th to the 23rd. Graduation, for those who are planning ahead, will be the 4th. And last day of school, well, we'll see.
What is the last day of school this year?
18th?
I think we're at the.
I'm looking for reinforcement, 18th, yes, because we had two days at the beginning of the year, but no big, I'm not even going to say it out loud. We had, we had two weather-related days at the beginning of the year, and we'll give you an official last day of school at the end of March. Got to get through April first.
Right after 18th.
Yeah. So typically, the calendar, the dates run almost exactly the same, just flip the calendar forward. What everyone's, what PDC is working on, that's our professional development group, is just placing those half-days and determining what's collaboration versus what's, what's a meeting day versus what's a parent-teacher conference day. So we should have that in full for your approval on the 17th.
You'll double-check religious holidays.
Yep.
And M-Captain Vegas.
Yep.
Try to do our best.
Thank you.
I know, it's hard. And then just another public service announcement, if everyone at this table hasn't done it, we're really trying to get some feedback for that strategic planning survey to line us up for our focus groups on the 30th and the 31st. We've had, to date, about 200 parent and community responses, a little less, we've got to get the staff and the students to respond at the same level. We've got about 30 to 40 staff responses just at this point, and I think we had about 20 student responses. So, we really want to be able to have a full, broad picture of how people are viewing this. I think there was a little glitch with some of the questions in the survey in the beginning, but I know they were working hard, and that seems to be resolved. And then what you'll see coming up by the end of this week is an RSVP form for the March 30th and 31st focus groups, their Conversation Instruction in the World Cafe format, which is really a way to provide mixed groups providing feedback to one another and focus it on what we want to accomplish. What we'll do is an RSVP, just so we make sure we have critical mass in each of those groups, and we can make sure we have somebody from each, each stakeholder group represented so that they're effective. So it's not like you're committing, if you can't, if you say you're going to be there and you're not, nobody's going to come looking for you. We really don't need, need a lot of information about people, we just need to know a general head count for those days and what stakeholder group represents, and that's, that's it.
Have we responded to that?
I'm going to be sending you a link with RSVP, just click, just kind of a heads-up in case you see it.
And is there?
And that's all I've got, unless you have questions.
Is there, I'm sorry, did you mention there's a cutoff date for that?
Well, we were originally, there's no cutoff date for the focus groups, and we were originally going to cut off the survey on the 6th, but we're going to leave it open another week.
All right. Any questions, Pam? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go into our continued business. We have a Manchester Field Committee report. Cheryl, thank you, thanks for coming. Would you like to?
Pull up.
Yeah, why don't you pull up a chair?
Right here.
There's chairs, you know, there's chairs over there.
You can slide over. Thanks for coming.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Marshall, Director of Parks and Rec in town. The good news is, we're not here to look for any money or anything, so don't worry about that. This is Sean Daly, the chairperson of our Parks and Rec Committee, one of our members over there. We've been working for over a year with an engineer, because it was determined that, and I think everybody knows, we need more fields in town, there aren't really enough, and all the towns' fields are also shared with the schools, so we thought it was important to come here and kind of give an update. We did email out the presentation, but we also brought hard copies for everybody. We're not going to, as I said in my email, we're not going to go through every page of it or anything, but just kind of give you an overview of where we started, how we got to where we are, and just to kind of let you know where we are. But, again, Sean Daly's the chair, he's going to kind of lead that.
Do you want us to throw it up?
No.
No? Okay. Do you want to distribute those, so that we can follow along?
Just hand it to you, I'll pass them.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing those.
You're welcome.
Engineer did the color.
Yes, yes.
Not the Tom printer.
So, well, thanks for your time. So, just to give a quick follow-up to what Cheryl had stated there, obviously, we had an engineer come in, we had a survey done, public survey done about Park and Rec, and the overwhelming response came back was more fields, better quality fields, et cetera, which I think most of us who have children in town, whether in Essex or Manchester, have been to the fields in Manchester, and they're, they're not great. So from there, the engineer, Weston Sampson, the company that the engineer works for, went around to all the town fields and did analysis on those fields. One of the things that showed, and it's kind of, you could flip through in the back here.
Is there a page you want us to start?
It goes back to usage page.
Okay. Toward the back?
So just to give you some context, one of the things they did was, with the help of Cheryl, is they came up with the hour usage at these fields, okay? And how, how we came up with that was obviously through youth athletics and the regional school district, the sports teams that use the fields, and any other entity that might have permitted these fields. That's where we came up with these hours. The main thing I just wanted to point out is that Weston Sampson, you know, came up with a number, that's an industry number of, you know, grass fields or most fields, you only can use 250 to 550 hours per year. If you look to the far right, Mascanoma, down by the highway at Harvard, that's 837. Coach Field, which is great, it's synthetic, so that's actually, that's great, that's fine, it could be used for that, but when you go to Sweeney Park, whether it's the baseball, the softball, which is also the rectangular field, you're looking at, you know, back of the softball field, you're looking at over 1,200 hours there. The baseball field, over 600. So as you can see, well-passed capacity, and what that means is obviously with a grass field, it doesn't get time to repair itself. So, and for those who've been down there, you know in the back of Sweeney Park, it's slightly wet back there, so that even makes it worse. So with that, the committee, along with the engineer, came up with three options. One was Sweeney Park, to use that. The other was, when you're heading down Pine Street out to the highway, on the left is what they call the old burn dump, it's just a grass field now, to look into that. One was Sweeney Park to use that. The other was when you're heading down Pine Street out to the highway, on the left is what they call the old burn dump. It's just a grass field now, to look into that. And then the third was doing some work at Mascanoma, the park down there. So we prioritized that, and the number one priority came back through the committee and just talking to the folks, was Sweeney Park, the rectangle field and back. So that is a multi-use field that's used for softball during the spring, but in the spring, summer, but in fall, it's a multipurpose rectangular field. So the big, the big idea in that was to turn it into a synthetic turf field for a couple of reasons. One, obviously there are water issues back there, the grass doesn't do well back there. Two, it's a big rectangle space that we have and we can use, which as most people know, it's tough to find a space that large in Manchester for any activity. And then three, there is already lights there. So by putting that synthetic turf down, you would get unlimited usage there, particularly in the fall and spring when you have most of your usage. And then, so if you look at, I think it's on, it's called page four or five, these are the cost estimates for the field, the synthetic turf. And in total, roughly it comes to about 1.5 million. What we're doing for the capital budget, what we're asking for is on the right, is just to start the plan as far as getting preliminary design. Looking at the area, there has to be some, there has to be some testing done before that. Obviously, that's, that's where we're going to the town meeting with the capital budget. We've been through the town hall as far as numerous committees. The last committee we were in front of, just to socialize this, was the Board of Selectmen. And that's why we're here now, just to let you know what's going on. Obviously, you know, most of your students use that field, whether it's through school sports or they're just students, but they participate in youth activities as well. The other options in there as well would be Pine Street again. That would be just putting a grass field there. There would be parking, and that would be a multipurpose rectangular field. I thought primarily youth would use that for youth sports and practices, but obviously could be used for anything else. The last would be Mascanoma Park. You could put the softball field in there, but with the turf, you could go back at Sweeney Park. There's now, I would say, equipment that you can put in there as far as you can roll in mounds and base paths, so you can multi-use that synthetic turf back at Sweeney. But here would be, a lot of it would be just, just grading it over. If you go on that field, that Mascanoma field with the, down there, it's, it's very uneven. The baseball field, the softball field needs some work. Even the paths around, the walking paths need to be done over. So those were the top three improvements. And number one obviously would be the field at Sweeney Park, which we think, you know, with that price tag, you'd get, you would get a lot more usage out of the synthetic turf and lights, and the number of activities you could do on that field is unlimited to some degree. So, with that, that was just an overview. I don't know if you have any questions or thoughts on that?
And when, when are you meeting with the DOS again? Or do you have something planned coming up?
No, I don't believe we have anything else. We might, we might be doing another public forum. We already had a public forum before, but we might do one more public forum.
One more before the entire master plan is set, still in drafts, forming now?
Yep.
So this feeds into the town master plan instead of the town meeting.
That's right. When the town was asked to do a master plan, they went around various areas to ask for better master plans. And it's basically a subset of that master plan.
I see.
Thank you for your efforts. This is pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, this is really comprehensive. All right, does anybody have any questions about this, concerns, comments?
I guess from a district point of view, this doesn't affect this, does this have any effect or tie into the sports or how our athletics department interacts with or?
I think we use Sweeney mostly for practices.
For some solid, as their game field and then practices for.
It would only be an improvement, because I was just thinking, I don't think we'd do anything under the lights over there.
No.
No.
So I would just, you know, in coordination with Jordan, I'm sure if we lived through this disruption on Brook Street, I'm sure we can look through a disruption for the improvement over there. We have field space in Essex too that we underutilize. So I think where there's a will, there's a way. And I'm assuming you're, you're thinking Brook Street's already kind of in the works.
We were thinking that, some, some thought, I mean, we really went through a process of looking at different areas and all that and thinking, would it maximize the use of Brook Street? Would we put lights there? Kind of feeling like that in the neighborhood is already going through enough right now that it was not a good idea to even bring up. So instead of bringing the lights to the field, we kind of thought maybe bring the field to the lights where there's more neighbors and less impact.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Did he give you a sense, so I think Brook Street's in our strategic capital plan for a, a refresh this year and then a replacement two years out?
Yep. But there is some ownership by the town of Manchester for Brook Street. So it wouldn't be carried completely by the district, correct?
Yes, the rental agreement for the Manchester facilities includes a contribution for Brook Street based on usage between the two communities.
I thought this was fascinating. I'd love to know how they arrived at determining the hours.
So that, and that's just permitted hours, not even, you know, these other casual uses that we don't count. I mean, it's just what's permitted, you know. So I'm taking that off the field permit basically.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
The more fields, the better.
Right, and we know that Brook Street will be having more done soon. And that's part of that long-range budget.
Mm-hmm.
The town's piece of it, yeah, we're not forgetting about that.
Awesome.
And I'm glad you guys aren't, because that's important too.
No, I think the working theory for quite a while was that Brook Street was going to be the first to get done. But then the testing that's come back that Obby's overseeing, it's more of a health-safety risk on Highland than it is on Brook Street just because of the way the fields are manufactured. There are two different types of turf. You can get into the details even following.
They're just, they're different types of fields. And so this one has a lot of seams and the seams can only go so long. And both of them were kind of past our warranty period, so we're into bonus years.
So you think having, having them done at the same time?
Well, probably not the same exact year, but soon they're both going to come. They were built in fairly close to each other and so they're going to probably need to be replaced somewhat close to each other, within about one to three years apart.
Sure, one question, is there part of, is the tennis courts that are part of Coach Field slash Brook Street, is there any sort of rehab or overhaul of those once the construction moves out of there in two years?
They always resurfacing.
Okay.
So that will be upgraded. Whether the fencing, I don't know, if there's damage to the fencing, I think we'd have to discuss that at the time, but I'm not anticipating they're going to do any damage. So in terms of making it accessible and refreshing the whole area, that would be.
I think they opened it up some just to be able to get their heavy equipment in and out, but.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, absolutely any damage they would take care of, no problem. And 100% that I think the contract requires a resurfacing. I don't think it's a, I'm not sure that the whole area will have a redesign of any kind. I'm sure that's not in the works and really it's just to make sure that it accounts for the impact of them using it.
Right, they have to bring it back at least as good as it was when they got there.
It'll be better, it'll be better because it hasn't been resurfaced, I don't think, in quite some time.
Right, well, actually, like five years ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but where, when we only do the skim surface, you have to do it every five or so years when you're not doing the base.
Yeah, and I think they're doing the top surface. I don't think they're doing a whole reconstruction.
Right, well, hopefully it's depending on damage, if any damage is done.
One of my walkaways from your report is that we need to dig into our tennis courts a little bit. I think of them as new, like brand new, but now they're 10 years old. So I, just in terms of maintenance.
The high school ones.
The high school ones and skim coat and things, so.
Yeah, move them out there with the mop.
All right.
Yeah, the last thing I'd just say, besides saying thank you for your time, would be any help or support you could give with this would be great. Appreciate, obviously, it's, it's obvious that your student body benefits greatly from these fields, so any help you could give would be great.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, Eli, the Manchester Western Woods report. How you doing?
Doing okay, I like you.
Good. Good, good. All right, do you have anything you need us to project or?
I don't think so. Did you folks get copies of this stuff?
We did, we got it, we got it in our pocket.
That's fine.
Okay, so Manchester recently finished up an update to its master plan, as I'm sure you're all aware. And one of the problems of that plan, as it were, was to focus conservation efforts in the Western Woods area of Manchester. And as part of that effort, we started trying to put together a bit of a strategy gratitude. And we started as a working group with members from the Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, Conservation Commission, and a few other miscellaneous people to start to come up with, to articulate this, this plan that could be, that all the boards were on the same page. We'd had a few issues where we tried to bring conservation properties before town meetings to put them under conservation. The Conservation Commission wanted to do it, they'd come in late. The different boards would have a little bit of a kerfuffle trying to decide what it was about and whether or not to improve it. And we wanted to get in front of them and have a more structured approach to it. This way, we'd have all the boards understanding what the long-term plan is and on the same page and in agreement in advance. And the output of that was the three documents that we sent to you, which are very small, and but an awful lot of work went into producing. The idea was to keep them small so that they'd be readable and understandable. These are going to go to all the residents. Now, they describe the overall strategy for doing preservation in the Western Woods. And they also describe a particular parcel that's going to be on the town meeting agenda in April. Now, the part that I really want to talk to you about was the strategy within the Western Woods involves putting together what is currently known as a Forest Stewardship Plan. I always have trouble pronouncing that. And what that plan will do is it will take this area that we have got under preservation and it will come up with a very large plan outlining the different types of geol, geological and ecological resources within that area. And it will come up with suggestions for how to maintain it, what the different areas could be used for. And this is where you folks come in. So some, one of the things that we want to use a conservation area for is passive recreation and educational purposes, as much as possible. We say that over and over again, but we don't really do a very good job of actually doing anything about it. So one of the efforts that we're trying to, one of the things that we're trying to come, come up with here is a plan for actually making these areas more accessible to people. And also, as for part of the Forest Stewardship Plan, make it clear what areas would be used for, could be used for what purposes. And then proceed to try to, you know, I don't want to use the word develop, that's the wrong word, maintain and manage those areas so that they would be useful to residents for those purposes. So in an effort to engage more of the community in that, I asked to come here with the idea in mind to get a relatively small investment in cooperation from the school district. And what I'm looking for is, as part of that plan, if the people putting together the Forest Stewardship Plan had guidance from as much of the community as possible about what types of activities they wanted to do, what types of educational efforts we thought could do in that area, they could make an effort, however small, however limited it might be, to include that in the plan or at least take, take it into consideration. So for example, I know that you, you folks already have the Cathedral of Pines for the cross-country team. However, if you were looking for other sites where you could do cross-country training, maybe there are areas in here that could be developed for that. But you might have criteria that say, yes, this would be someplace where we could have people do cross-country training, but if the trails are not of a particular configuration, you can't use it. So if, if that could go in as input into the plan upfront, then you don't actually have to do anything. We could just have the plan arranged so that in the long run, it would be an option. Or from an educational standpoint, if there were opportunities in the biological sciences for maybe somebody in the ASR program might have interest in ecological sciences, part of this plan will be to manage species and come up with management plans for different types of species. If there were an interest in the school potentially in developing programs to allow students to get involved with that, it would be great if we could have that in some way articulated and thought of as part of the initial plan so that it would be an option. You don't have to do it, but it would be nice to maintain as an option or at least involve you in the process to that degree to see if we can, you know, increase the possibility that you might actually be able to make use of the resource. So I'm not asking for a tremendous investment from the school in it. Really what I'm asking is maybe a little bit of time when we're making up the plan to sit down with one or two key people who might be able to provide some of this. And I don't know what the format of that would actually take. This is, this is very early in the process. We're going to be doing this over the next several months. Like I said, not looking for a huge investment. And I wanted to gauge your interest and see if you were interested, how we might proceed. That's my opinion.
Well, Eli, I really appreciate that. I think this is fascinating. I think it would be definitely worth our time to discuss and come back to you with some ideas. And I think it's, it's a great idea. And I want to say I, we appreciate you coming to us and presenting this, because I think it's, it's important. I think we should proceed by, you know, perhaps doing some thinking over it and then we should have a discussion and come back to you with some curriculum ideas. I mean, we can involve Julie, but Pam, what's your initial thought on this?
My initial reaction is getting you or getting the members who are seeking inputs of conversation with Tricia, Keith Gray, and Jordan. So that would be our environmental teacher, the principal, maybe Julie too, if we're looking for some K-12 connections, just so she can think about where to make another connection. And Jordan is athletic director. So he would have a sense of feasibility in terms of using his practice area. From what you said, I'm thinking more secondary, but there might be some other connections that we can make at the elementary. So that's similarly, similar people came to mind. But you really want to talk to the practitioners in terms of how it's going to roll out?
Okay.
If I heard, Chris.
It's just funny, because just today I was working with a student who happens to be at Glen Irkard School. And at next right, abut in Glen Irkard School, they have a huge conservation land. And this little guy was so excited because this week they have a special weekend and he signed up for a program. So every day he gets to go out and be in the conservation land for like two hours every single morning. And he just said, I just wish I could just do that every single day. It's just my favorite thing. And I just think anything we can do to get our kids out in the woods a little more, not only for their science education, but also for their mental health. I mean, there could be a meditation walk, there could be lots of great things. So thank you for doing that and for including us.
Pam?
I think it's, I was going to say I'll echo what's been said, and I guess I'll add on to it. I've been taking part in local woods with trustees reservations as recently as last fall with from first through fifth graders on a hike through Manchester Essex Woods and the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. A little bit more distant from Essex, but I know Essex Green Belt does things there. And I'm in full support of wherever you go. And I guess I think since the town is doing this and looking for input, even I'm sure as entrusted, maybe even non-participants, but watchers to see what, where the discussion goes. I'm sure those organizations, and I don't know if Essex has equivalent, would be probably really interested because I was talking to one of the trustees at MBCT recently and they were saying, how do we engage and better serve the younger population and students and all the rest? So I really appreciate you involving, you reaching out, including that plan. I think it's great.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Thank you so much, this is great.
So then, should I follow up with Pam?
Yeah, you and Shannon?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, we'll copy Shannon.
Yeah, Shannon Erdman is our Chair, who's not here tonight, as you know. Sure, any communication would be great, any idea of a question to.
Yeah. I'm driving on 128. Headed towards Gloucester. This is on the left, right? Right? Am I going this way?
Yeah, that was towards Gloucester.
It's on the right.
It's on the, it's the pink.
It's on the right. Is it right though?
Does this, is this, or is it 16?
That's Essex 16.
So it's before exit 16.
It's closer to Hamilton than Essex.
Yeah, I'm only, you know, I'm thinking about cross-country, they used to take a bus to go.
We have cross-country people too, do you? They used to have to ride over to, to.
Gordon.
Gordon College. So this is not too possible.
This is the other side of the highway.
They're running across the.
Yeah.
No, this is longer range thinking, this, you have to get those like through perfectly. Part of what we're planning is how to develop access to this.
Then it's on the other side, it's, it's.
Yeah.
That's why you don't find us a way better.
Okay.
Well, it's closer, I think it's closer.
Okay, thank you.
So Eli, looking at your timeline here, so you're spending, you know, the rest of the month with community meetings. I'm sure you've got, and then you've got just like April, the town meeting, but on that particular parcel. And then the Forest Stewardship Plan will be put together between May and August, is that right?
Uh, you can move it along.
Okay.
Put it together.
All right. So. So we can communicate this with Shannon as well, and then any communications if you want to see, you know, direct it to Pam and Shannon, and just kind of noodle over it and come back to you with some ideas. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Thanks, Eli.
Have a nice meeting.
Thank you.
All right. We've got the Essex, Jennifer, I think you're up.
I think this will be up on the screen.
Yeah, you have some.
I'll move around the side. Actually, I'll move around the side.
I can move to the side, you guys can take the mic.
I do have an adapter. I was wanting to sit inside.
Say it again? You guys. I could, yeah.
So that's real.
This one's better because you can see the swing everybody. Actually, this is easier.
You can see that end there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So we've got the Essex Elementary School Spotlight presentation.
And your presentation was so big, I could not even.
We weren't able to get it in our pocket.
Sorry.
This is just our first view. Oh, well, that's kind of actually fine.
Yeah, I tried to, I PDF'd it, but then it kept blocking the other time I tried to send it.
Seven thirty at night?
It's awesome.
You know what? I gotta do them. I tried, I was like, can I do this without my hand? No, so you might see me doing a little of this up and down, so I apologize. All right, well, thanks for being here.
Sure, sure, absolutely. So thank you for the opportunity to come. We're actually really excited about this. It's funny when you work hard on something and you kind of get to relive a lot of the cool things that are happening in your school. It does get you kind of reinvigorated because you don't often think about all these things. So we are excited tonight. I'd like to introduce, this is Ashley Sartell. Ashley is one of the teachers in our swing program, which is the students with more severe special needs. That is housed, it's a district program at Essex Elementary. She also is a staff member on the student council, which is a little bit how I looked her in to help. We also have some parents out here from Essex, which I'm really excited to see. I don't know if they're here cheering us on, or if they were here anyway.
We're usually here.
PTO president, former PTO, everything, and school council, so we're kind of excited that they're here too. So anyway, that being said, what we did is Pam had said then and now. That was sort of the theme for what she wanted us to do.
That's Sarah's theme.
Say it again?
Sarah Wolf.
Sarah's idea, so we're going to hope to deliver the goods from Sarah. So what we did is we framed our presentation around the categories that are established in the district improvement plan, and then trickle down to the school improvement plan. So you'll see that theme kind of emerging throughout. So we began with the heading of resources. So, did it not work? Very good. So we did the then. I think you'll have a little chuckle. I really don't think this was that long ago, at least in my lifetime. So I think it's funny when we look at how things have changed over the past decade. We often think of technology. This was not that long ago. And then you think about where we're at right now. So that was sort of when we thought of resources, we wanted a slide on then. This is just sort of good for a chuckle. And then we look at now in terms of resources at Essex Elementary. So we're going to go, I'm going to go through some of those things. As you know, Essex Elementary houses the ELL program for the district at the elementary level. In the slides here, you'll see, that's Leslie Bolio. She's the ELL teacher that pretty much services everybody within the district, but this is her space at Essex. She does an amazing job of, first of all, making her space really welcoming and inviting. And she works really hard collaborating with the teachers, providing them with support on how to work with Yale students, and she provides direct instruction to them. So we're very pleased that she is with us, and we really enjoy working with her. So then there's the swing program at EES, where we focus on academic, social, and behavioral support to students with more severe special needs. This is the program that Ashley is in with another teacher, Melissa. Currently, we have students with autism, with cognitive and physical disabilities in that program. The program is a huge part of the culture of Essex Elementary School, where we focus on developing inclusive practices and accepting differences. And I think it does as much for the students in the swing program as it does for typically developing students that are not in a special ed program. It really teaches them a lot. We think about technology now. We have many new additions over the last five years at Essex Elementary School. Currently, we have five Chromebook carts. That was really in the last, I don't know, I want to say three years. Very excited. We keep saying, bring them on, bring them on, because the more technology you can put in the kids' hands in real time, the better off they are. We have three iPad carts. We have active boards in every single classroom, and they're fully utilized throughout the day. It's very rare you go in a classroom and not see students engaging with work on the active boards. And teachers' ability to integrate technology has enhanced their instruction and also increased the really high level of student engagement. So then, oops. Yeah, we're there, okay. So the Ruler Initiative Pam spoke about a little earlier, that there are a bunch of folks from Manchester Essex down at Yale right now. They're on their way back tonight. It's been a very successful initiative within the district, but I'm really proud to talk about the work that's happened at Essex Elementary School. Last month, a group of researchers, two from Yale and two from Harvard, visited the district, and they spent half a day at Essex Elementary School, meeting with the staff. They toured the building, and they actually did an observation of a lesson in a third-grade classroom. At the end of the visit, one of the researchers said to the group of folks sitting in this room, talking to them, "I've visited hundreds of schools, and this is absolutely amazing. I'm so inspired." Which really struck me because one of the charter words the staff developed when we talked about how do we want to feel at work every day? One of the very first words we picked was inspired. So I found it really interesting to think this woman was telling us that she was inspired about the work we were doing. So we're proud of that. Student Resource Officer, SRO, you all know that that's a new initiative, a new model within the district. I would have to tell you it has been a huge success. So if any of you had any trepidations about it, please don't. It has been a huge benefit to the Essex Elementary School community on so many levels. I personally have appreciated the increase in communication that we have between the schools and the PD. I never actually thought we had a problem with communication, but what I have seen is like just an increased level. Andrea Locke is so incredibly responsive. I can text her, and in two seconds, she gets back to me. I can do it at eight o'clock at night when something comes to my mind. She is an interesting role in that she's the SRO for the district, but she's a Manchester police officer. So she has no connection with the Essex folks, but she has worked really tirelessly to form a connection with the Essex Police Department. And I think that's been really helpful. The juvenile officer in Essex and she have been starting to work closely and actually meeting with me. So she's not working in isolation. She's sort of joining forces with the folks in Essex. So it's really improved the relationship with the police department. She has been in classrooms and even helped arrange a really fun game. I don't know if you can see on the right-hand bottom. I can't tell you exactly what the name of the game was, but they, all these cops from Essex PD and Andrea went in and played this crazy game in the gym with fourth and fifth graders. It was like a little bit of throwing the ball at each other, knocking cones down. I couldn't figure out what was going on. But I will tell you, the police were like big children, having way more fun than the kids were having. But what a great way for these kids to get to interact with the folks that keep them safe every day and look at them in a very different way. So you see a lot of pictures of this happening. Danny Bruce up on the top left with Andrea, he's a father of two children at Essex Elementary School. What a great connection for everybody. So we're really excited about it, and we really would like to thank you for voting in favor of that. So, so then there's Chief Dowsett on the bottom left. He's the fire chief. He's been in that role, I've been here 11 years, so we've worked side by side for that length of time. And then in the middle is the brand-new police chief in Essex, Paul Francis. He replaced Pete Silva, who had been here, I think, for like 30 years. He and I have worked very closely together. It's been a seamless transition. So we have a valued relationship. We've developed it over the years. We meet, I'd say maybe every other month, to develop our safety protocols and practice them. We've gotten kind of so good when working with them that it's almost second nature. We did a, we call it a quiet safety drill, someone's stay-to-stay put, but with kids that age, we kind of renamed it. And, you know, we had a few glitchy things that came up, and we're working to remedy those things. But, so these folks keep us safe, and we have a great relationship with them. So then we move into the heading.
We do not.
Oh, you do.
You get to, I, you get to take a break, and I get to talk. So I'm going to interrupt you, Jennifer. So I'm moving on to our school climate. So at EES, school climate has really changed drastically over the years. I remember a time when I was in school, which I don't think was that long ago, but it's starting to get there too, where school climate focused on rules and behavior and compliance. We worked a lot on teaching rope skills, whereas there was no, at that point, there was no focus on improving the school climate for students and the staff that worked there. And now it's so, so, so much different. In terms of the climate at EES, we have developed a school vision statement and a set of core values, which you see here in the picture, that we follow on a daily basis. So as staff, we are meant to follow it, and as students, we are meant to follow it. And as, as students show honesty, responsibility, achievement, and respect in our school, they're presented with what we call an EES compass. And those get displayed so that the students can feel proud to show that they showed one of their core values. And then we also created a song that we sing at our school meetings. It's called Charting Charting. It's very high-pitched, so when you listen to us, please. I can't really sing it either, but I know Richard Carpenter tries really hard to teach all of our students. But it's a great song, and it's a great way for all of us to kind of feel together in our school meetings. Every September, we focus on expected behaviors and school safety with our students. So as part of our PBIS program, we have developed an event to focus on teaching students expected behaviors in all the areas of our school. The students travel around to stations, and you see some of them here, and learn the expected behaviors in the bathroom, what to do if you go to the nurses office. Don't be scared if you go see Dr. Roberts, because there's a very specific plan in place when that happens. So as you can see, they practice those expected behaviors in the hallway. And we really have seen that it's decreased a lot of the things that just naturally happen in a school environment when maybe a student that's new, or a student that maybe sometimes forgets the rules, can practice them with other students and as well as learn them every year. So this is something we do every September with all the kids, and it takes about three hours. I think that we follow around to stations, but it's a really great way to remind our kids at the beginning of the year kind of what's expected. My favorite, one of my favorite things that we have started to implement to help our climate is understanding our differences. It has started in grades three, four, and five. Students in these grade levels learn about the experiences and challenges of individuals that face physical disabilities, learning disabilities, and autism. As a culminating activity, we actually have speakers with those disabilities come into the school and talk to the kids, and it's really great because every speaker we've had so far has invited questions from the students. With the learning disabilities one in particular, we actually have high school students come to the elementary school and sit in front of our students and talk about, "When I was here, this was happening to me." And we've had kids in fourth grade raise their hand and say, "That happens to me all the time too." So it's been a really great way for the kids to learn about disabilities and what some students may be challenged with. But at the same time, it's given them the opportunity to kind of realize everybody faces challenges, so. Inclusiveness. Our climate at EES is extremely, we've been focusing a lot of inclusive, to create an inclusive environment. For example, we had the high school GSA come and present to staff regarding gender inclusiveness, which has actually changed our ballroom dancing unit and PE. If you have seen ballroom dancing from the past, it was always something that the students were extremely nervous about. It was, it's still great, and it's still wonderful, but students are no longer placed in the opposite gender couples anymore. Students are taught to lead and follow, and they're grouped with all genders. So we basically, Mr. March came up with this great way of putting a colored, like, necklace on the student so we know who the follower and the leader is, but it's a great way for the kids. And actually, we've gotten a lot of parent feedback that the kids are less nervous to be in that, to go to that activity, and we have more people, more kids that actually end up participating, which is great. Another, again, all of our staff find ways to focus on diversity and inclusion and focus lessons on that in the classroom. In this little picture over here with all the crayons, that's a kindergarten lesson where the students realized, and after reading a book about crayons, realized that all the colors in a crayon box are needed to make a complete picture. And the way they connected that to diversity and inclusion is that just like the differences and uniqueness of all of us in the classroom or all of us in the world make the world a more beautiful and amazing place. So the fact that we're doing that in kindergarten is really amazing. Oh, green team. At EES, we find great ways to develop opportunities for our students to show responsibility. They have after-school and before-school jobs. So this is our green team right here. Fourth and fifth graders on the green team arrive early, two days a week, to collect classroom recycling and empty the compost buckets. Students have also volunteered to help with our Helping Hands program, which is like a teacher helper in the morning. So so many times I'm like, "Oh, quick, I need to copy this," or "I need to cut out that laminate." And they're there to help me in the morning, which is great. And then we have a lot of kindergarten helpers, so a lot of fourth and fifth graders who come in to help the kindergartners in the morning by reading them a book or by helping them walk in from the bus. So it's a really great opportunity for them. Another opportunity we have is student council. Students have focused this year on community service, fundraising, school spirit, and school legacy. So they have monthly after-school meetings, and some of the projects they've worked on, they planned a bookmarks for Bahamas Drive and raised $142, which was really great. And then a Caps for Koalas event, so we paid a dollar to wear a hat during the school day, and they raised $247. So it was really great for them. And we are very proud of the group's efforts to kind of support places that may be suffering. One of our biggest changes in climate is our flexible seating. If you haven't been in classrooms recently, please definitely walk around and see what our kids are sitting in these days. The classroom climate allows students a choice to decide how comfortable they want to feel while they're learning. And as you can see, these students look like they are extremely comfortable in the classroom. We have what is a web chair here. We have balls for them to sit on. We have backjack chairs. And then last but not least, we offer them a lot of opportunities for movement as well. And you can see the student over here is actually using like a bike as he's sitting. EES, I think we missed one. Hold on one second, I apologize. There we go. Backyard growers. Our backyard growers program has been a huge success. Students and staff have planted and harvested lettuce in the spring, and potatoes, beets, carrots, squash, and pumpkins in the fall. So all of our students are given the opportunity during the fall and spring seasons to go out and do some harvesting, which is great. Moving. Why is it going backwards? Technology. EES Got Talent is a must-see event. The fourth and fifth grade students create and present their own acts to highlight their amazing skills. And it was actually amazing last year. It turns out our teachers also had some hidden talents. And they actually had the last act in the show where I was not present. Dr. Roberts, were you there?
That's the funniest thing I've ever seen. You know, especially if you know these people, Annie, you know these people. Some of them were so out of character and out of their element, and they did such a good job. I haven't laughed that hard, but the kids were hysterical. For them to see their teachers being goofy and singing a song and, like, look at Miss Stanley, who's known as the Queen, and she has her crown on, singing and dancing.
I thought she was in the baseball shirt.
No, that's Miss Stanley. Miss, the Queen has the polka dot dress on.
She would never wear a red top shirt.
So and I have to tell you, this came from the staff. You know, somebody said, "You know, the kids are doing a great job with this, but we really need to show them like what we got." And so they recruited all these folks, and one of the teachers had this, I don't know, she had a video of something she saw somewhere else. And they practiced after school, and they recreated it. When they walked out onto the stage, the kids were all like, "What?" The problem is now I think there's going to be an expectation that they do that. I'm not sure they're going to drum up that kind of talent ever here, but.
Oh, they've already been trying, because I don't have any talent, so I'm trying to find a way to see what my talent could be.
It was amazing. It was amazing. And all of the kids come up with their own, they have their own talents, things they want to share. They audition. They have to go through a process, which is, you know... They audition, they have to go through a process, which is, you know, good for them. And I'm always struck by talents kids have that I had no idea they had. And it's a really great opportunity to see them shine in a different way than you see them at school every day.
Speaking of teachers, we, our climate is very collaborative. As staff, we're always finding new ways to collaborate with each other throughout the school days. We do obviously participate in our district initiatives and our school-based projects, but we have a lot of fun planning our own collaborative activities as well. You can see here that, as teachers, we created a Bitmoji board, where all of us had a Bitmoji, and the staff and students actually got, we didn't tell anybody who was who. And the staff and students got to vote on, "I think number one is Ms. Artel. I think number two is Mr. March." So they actually got to participate as well, and it was so much fun. The kids loved to be out.
They were very competitive in trying to figure out. You see three or four kids lined up looking and figuring out who was who. And then sometimes they tip me off because they figure something out. But some of the Bitmojis up there look exactly like the teacher. You know the second you see it, and then some of them you really have to think about.
And then the other two pictures are a great, fun collaborative activity that Greg March planned for us. So as staff, we played some of the project adventure and ruler games that we would do, that we would work with our students on in the classroom during a morning meeting, or a soft start. And he presented a lot of new ideas for us to use with the students in the classroom. And as we went through the process, it was really nice. At the beginning of the meeting, we charted ourselves on the mood meter. And after our first game, which I lost, so I was very down, and in the, in the blue-red zone. But needless to say, we charted ourselves over time, and it was really great to see how our emotions changed even from an activity like that.
Now it's my turn. All right, you're gonna have to stop me again.
I will, don't worry.
I don't have her slides on my page, so it's hard to know when it's hard to turn. So when we look at the notion of the whole child, we talked a little bit about what would we think about back in the day, you know, even, I would say even maybe 10 years ago. And we think about the fact that movement really only happened at recess time and during PE class. We really didn't think much about movement. Classroom rules were usually just posted. Maybe the first day of school, the teacher would tell the students what the rules were. And there really wasn't a big push or focus on students' emotional well-being. That's not to say we were bad people and we didn't pay attention, but there really wasn't the talk and the push that we have now, supporting students in that way. And then you hit the "now" button. And we take a look, for example, we've spoken numerous times about ruler. My, how things have changed. As you know, the ruler model was implemented within the district two years ago. This provided the staff and students with a framework to focus on developing one's own emotional intelligence. I think the staff has benefited from this as much as the students have. In our recent parent survey, which was very interesting, we do it every other year with the school council, the, the parents were asked, you know, they were like 35 questions, but one of the questions asked about whether parents were seeing any indication of ruler at home. And I was really surprised, like, 57% in, on all the other questions, we would think is, wow. You'd be like, ugh, we need to look at that question. But when I hear that 57% of the families are seeing or hearing some aspect of ruler at home, that's pretty amazing after two years where the students have really only been involved. Are we a full year with them, or two?
I think this is our second year, yeah.
That parents actually had comments written that oftentimes when there's a conflict in the family, they hear some of the language coming out, how they're using it. Some parents are actually trying to use some of the strategies themselves. So I'm pretty impressed at more than half of the parents that answered the survey questions already talking about how they see this at home. And that'll continue to be a focus that we try to help families know how to access this. Some of the things you're seeing, and on this next slide, I think you can see it even better. Every classroom develops their own charter. And a charter is basically asking the students in the class as a group to define how do they want to feel at school. Usually, they pick four, five, six words. It's a collaborative process. They brainstorm, they whittle it down, they really get into the words. And this is an example of some classroom charters that were developed. And then they put them into some kind of a thematic, as you can see, visual. So you'll see Mrs. McNeil's class, the students, this one over here, want to feel cheerful, calm, comfortable, confident, and cared for. These are third graders. This is what they came up with when they were in their classroom during the day. They discuss how this will look every day in their classroom, and they find ways that students can demonstrate how to live the charter. I would have to say that I use the charters if a child ends up coming to my office because they've been naughty in some way. Often, it involves some form of a conflict, or something they did that maybe was unexpected. And it's really nice for me to be able to ask the children, you know, "What are you, what's your classroom charter?" I have yet to meet a student that can't recite every word on their charter, which means they're really living this in their classrooms. And when they tell me, it's easy for me to then say, "So think about what just happened and why you're sitting here, and what we're gonna talk about. What word do you think on your charter? The feeling that maybe you weren't quite living up to." I've yet to have a student not know what I'm talking about. And they usually can say, "Maybe I wasn't being calm," or, you know, "Maybe I wasn't being cheerful," or whatever it is. And then we can talk about how are they gonna fix that? What could you do differently? I've shifted so that often if they have sort of a consequence, I might have them write about their charter and figure out how did they break it, and what they might do differently. So it's really nice to see how that connection can happen throughout the building.
Can I interrupt for just a second? It's also really nice, because I work across grade levels, to see how that, as the students have a second year with the ruler curriculum, that they're really starting to develop more language around emotions, and that some of the charters that maybe weren't as, like, great as these ones are, kind of have developed because the students are developing with the program. So that's what I think I love, is, is that this, like, the third and the fifth grade in particular in this have shown a lot of growth just from year, from last year to this year. Kindergarten kind of always comes in, and we need to teach them ruler for the first time. But I think it's really great to see even, and I think it will be great to see, like, when this group comes into middle, middle school and high school, that that shared language is gonna be throughout. I think it's gonna be great.
So then we teach students about the mood meter, which you saw with the adults in the building, playing and doing some project adventure activities. This is how we determine how we're feeling in the moment. So anybody can do this. You look at the mood meter, and you plot on one axis is your, axis is your pleasantness, the other one is your energy. Often, we'll start a meeting and talk about how we're all feeling. You know, I can be feeling very pleasant but low energy. I'm really tired, it's eight o'clock at night. And then we decide, is that really where you need to be for whatever kind of meeting or thing we're doing? And what can we do to bring it up? Maybe we all need to get up and dance and be silly for a minute and sit back down. So the teachers are teaching this to children. We teach them the vocabulary words. So if you see that one on the far right, those are all post-it notes with words that children plot the different vocabulary words that fit into each quadrant. And then they're able to start using the words. When we went to the training, their jargon was, "If you can name it, you can tame it." So if a child can actually name it, rather than just happy, sad, or whatever, if they can give it a word, they can often talk more about what they need to do to tame it. And we're already seeing a difference with this at Essex Elementary. I'll also say that I see teachers using this in their instruction in terms of literacy. So when they're talking about character development, you see lessons where teachers will walk over to the mood meter and some of their vocabulary words, and talk about how is this character feeling right now? And what, what's the problem? So it's really being integrated in so many nice ways. We teach students how they can be their best selves. You see some pictures of kindergarten. The one little boy with the hat on is a first-grade student. We have some third-grade pictures. These are all examples of after a lesson about being your best self. And teachers often refer to being your best self when students maybe are struggling with their own emotions or regulating themselves. And you hear students start talking about this as well, about, "I wasn't being my best self." Sometimes grown-ups say some of those things too. I've had a moment where I'm like, "No, I think I was my best." We use the DESA assessment to determine which students might need a second tier of instruction in various social skill areas. They meet with Dr. Welling once a week in a small group and focus on specific skill development. Here, you can see Dr. Welling with a group of students. They, I think in this group, they might have been talking about perspective-taking, often how it's important to be able to take someone else's perspective. And this is just an example of some of the different curriculum that she uses, that she works with students. And the third tier of support would be one-on-one couns, uh, one-on-one counseling, that is, with our adjustment counselor, Mrs. South, who would refuse to be in that picture, so we just took a picture of her room. All right, fine, you won't be in the picture, we'll just take a picture of your room. Then we, we talked earlier about movement breaks, and why it's important that we focus on movement. Students need movement throughout their day, not just at recess. So we build in movement breaks all day long. Here's an example on the left of Go Noodle. The kids follow along with whatever's happening on the screen. They dance, they rock, they roll, they have a great time, they're really adorable. Students love to dance, do fun activities. You see some students in the middle doing wall push-ups. It's a great way for kids to kind of get some sensory input throughout their day and exercise. It's very easy to do. Fidgety kids, you can just have them go over and do 10 on the wall. It's not a punishment, it's just good for them. So we find a variety of very quick ways in the moment for kids to do movement. The other thing is some of those flexible seats that Ashley was referring to earlier. We have wobble stools that you see kids wiggle them around. I definitely would have needed one of those. You see the foot pedals that kids are using, so we give them a lot of opportunities throughout the day. So, this is you. I knew that.
You remember. Perfect. So, school and community partnerships of the past are really not as strong as they are today. In the past, parents might have only received calls for student discipline, or been in the school for that reason. Most communication was done by mail. And community partnership really came through the town library. But now, we have our wonderful PTO. You are welcome to say anything back there if you want to add to my presentation. But really, we have a great PTO at Essex Elementary School. Our PTO sponsors many of the events and enrichment programs that our students enjoy on a daily basis. Kindergarten goes to Appleton Farms. They go to the Children's Museum. They have the Science Museum come into their classroom. Grade one goes to the Topsail Fair in the Laigo Museum. Grade two goes to the Butterfly Place, the PBS6 Museum. Giles LaRoche, an artist, comes in and, and works with them in the classroom. Grade three is all about Essex, and themed trips around Essex. Whether it be the Essex Cruise, going to the church, doing the shipbuilding, they travel, and that's all funded by the PTO. In fourth and fifth grade, they go to Lowell Mills. They go to the Audubon. One of fifth grade's favorite activities every year is the hands-on history. When a Revolutionary War person comes in and, and kind of lets them dress in, in the garb, and see all of the different types of weapons and things they used back then. And then finally, they sponsor ballroom dancing. We would be nowhere without our PTO, so thank you so much. And thank you for being here. Another wonderful community partnership is our Hoedown. Daisy Nell and Captain Stan have been supporting our music curriculum for many years. Our new Hoedown is a great opportunity for students, staff, and parents to demonstrate their line dancing skills, and also have a great time. And it's really great to kind of come and see Mr. Carpenter in the middle, and with Daisy Nell and Stan, and really, all the kids get into it. Another community partnership is Change is Simple. So in 2018, grades two through five began participating in our program called Change is Simple. The program teaches our students social and environmental responsibilities through experimental learning. It inspires action and promotes healthy people, as well as a healthy planet and community. So you can see here, they have really great ways to kind of engage the students. Like, in third grade, they talk about the ocean and the rainforest, but they get to sit in tents while they talk to them about it. In fourth grade, they do a whole unit on recycling, but they have them in the gym, and they're like racing back and forth to recycle. So it's, although we recycle in our school on a regular basis, they have a great way of making it really fun for the students. And then here, I believe in second grade, they learn about life cycles. So here, you can see some second-grade students with little bee antennas on, and they are running back and forth from the hive. So Change is Simple has been a great community partnership that we've had for the past two years. The Happy is a Clam Race. I know, as a teacher, I go every year. This is a great way to support our school and community, and the wonderful enrichment programs that we have at EES. The 5K Race and the Fun Dashes are always a big hit. Parents, teachers, and students come out, they lace up their shoes, and they pound the pavement to show their support for Essex Elementary School. And you can see here, it's really great. We all get Happy is a Clam t-shirts. So each grade level has, and each classroom has their own colored t-shirt. And then, as you can see, a lot of the teachers support it, and come out and run to support our school. We also had the Polar Plunge this year, which I did not have any pictures from, but heard was a great success. I luckily was not nominated, please do not nominate me.
I paid $40 to not do it. I'm fine with that.
It was a really warm day though, so I just want to say, we got a lucky one on that one. I think Mr. Burnett was the only teacher who ended up...
He didn't?
Yeah. I know Patty Roundy really, really wanted to, so, but she was worried. Sad. This year, we had to say goodbye to our beloved playground. Students were given the opportunity to share poetry and writing regarding their favorite playground memories. And as a final farewell, we actually all went out onto the hot tub and took a school picture, waving goodbye to one of Essex Elementary School's oldest friends.
We tried to get the kids lined up like wings. I mean, that's what we came up with, just a little bit.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
We tried. It's not easy.
Yeah, the shadow does look like one.
They played the John Denver Song with the eagle. I did. I was fine, I'm not, like, but I, my first concert as a teenager was John Denver. They played that song, and that was it. So yeah, it was pretty, it was good.
Our community read activities have really unified our students and provide opportunities for cross-curriculum lessons. While reading The Incredible Book-Eating Boy, all the classroom, all the classrooms participated in going out and doing a drop everything and read on the front lawn. So it was really great to have kind of all of our classrooms out there. We took a lot of pictures, as you can see, we're all kind of sitting in little circles around, reading the book. Lessons for the Big Orange Spot were developed for every grade level, and they were in, they were developed for art class, for social studies, and for literacy. So it was great to see all the ways that we could use this book in the classrooms, as well as in some of the specials as well. I will say, it, the PTO helps us with this as well, and it really is a great opportunity. The kids come in in the morning, they're really excited to see the new books that are out for them. And it's a great way to kind of get them excited to read. And everybody at every grade level is reading the same book, so it's... Colonial Day. After completing a unit of study on the Pilgrims, Puritans, and Wampanoah Indians, grade three students enjoy a day back in colonial times. So as you can see here, with the help of parent volunteers running small group stations, the third graders churn butter. They eat flapjacks. They practice calligraphy, and they play some of, some of the old colonial games together.
I have to say Johnny cakes.
Oh, sorry, I, I flapjack, that's the different one. Thank you, they are Johnny cakes. Thank you for, for changing it for me. And again, I know that they are extremely challenging to make, and the butter as well is hard. So we put it in little containers, and the kids have to shake it with a marble inside. And it takes a really long time to churn that butter, but the kids get it done, so. But thank you, Johnny cakes. I will make sure for, for next presentation. Speaking of parent volunteers, they are everywhere at EES. The parents help Mrs. Hardy in the library. They sign up as mystery readers in kindergarten, and they provide enrichment during wind times. We really do love the opportunity to have parents in our classrooms at EES, and we find ways to incorporate them any way we can. In these pictures up here, you see a parent who's reading to, I think it's a third-grade class. And then they also, they had Chinese, I think it was Chinese New Year stations in, in second grade in Miss Stanley's class. And parent volunteers kind of run all that as well, so. For the Essex Bicentennial, our school community celebrated by having an Essex port. It was really a great opportunity to teach our students about their hometown of Essex. Local businesses from the town came in to present to the students. People from Woodman's came, the Shipbuilding Museum. One of the highlight events for all the students was seeing Alan McManon, the retired train conductor. He came in and shared his train collection, and also shared a lot of his authentic tools from the past. And they kind of loved sitting and talking to him, and asking him lots of questions about the train system in Essex. And they kind of loved sitting and talking to him and asking him lots of questions about the train system in Essex. School meetings. Our monthly school meetings are a great way for students to share their achievements with the community. Staff, students, and parents are invited to learn about our core values as well as see the hard work that our students complete throughout the school year. And you see here, we have a fifth grade presentation on our core values and then kindergarten actually did a really fun story this year where they read the whole school a story, but they acted it out with some stuffed animals and it was a really great opportunity for them to kind of be able to present to all of us. Family projects. In the younger grade levels, creative learning projects are sent home to promote family fun, we hope. I know sometimes they can get a little messy and we have seen some projects come in that definitely had some finger painting and some wonderful family fun ideas. Students in kindergarten use their fine motor skills to complete monthly themed projects, so these were from February. Every month, it's really nice to see the bulletin boards outside kindergarten, they send in their new family project and we all kind of get to see what they've done. First graders decorated pumpkins to depict their favorite storybook characters and as you can see here, we have two from this year. And then last but not least, I know second graders are sent home with a science experiment to investigate some science topics at home. So, we really do try to incorporate some family projects into what's happening. Our parent communication is, we've really worked hard to find amazing new ways to communicate with parents. We send home weekly newsletters, class websites have all of our information on them, as well as we send home parent emails. I think what's new and different is that we have Instagram, we have Twitter, and even Dr. Roberts has a blog, so please follow her. So, it's like, it's a lot of new technology ways for us to communicate with parents in the school. And then last but not least, oops, here we go. Partnering with the Ipswich YMCA has provided our students with the benefits of an enriching, fun after-school care program. Sarah Reed, who's in the picture over here, who's actually an EES alumni, runs the program and helps the elementary school children develop self-confidence, relationships with other students, positive values, and enhances their sense of community belonging.
The last heading, and I'm going to try to go quickly because I think we're over our time limit at this point and I'm sorry about that, is student achievement. There's some examples of how life used to be in school. This is probably how it was definitely when I went to school and I would say, you know, not that long ago, it was a little bit like what you see in the pictures. But now, students are much more actively engaged. There's some examples up here on the pictures of small group discussions, hands-on activities, and students engaged in explaining their thinking. We use a variety of modalities to help students learn. Here, you see a first grader writing in shaving cream, students practicing phonics with chalk crayons, and kindergartners during center time. Learning is never dull at Essex Elementary School. Here, teachers are learning more about project-based learning. We have a few classrooms where teachers are starting to experiment with that notion. This is where students are given the opportunity to learn during lessons in a way that connects to real-life situations and opportunities. And there's some examples of that there. In a couple of classrooms, teachers have something called Genius Hour, where students choose a topic of high interest and then research it and become an expert in that area. They develop a presentation and share it with their class and their parents. The topics range from things like sloths over here on the left to somebody who wants to become a photographer. Students love having choice in their learning. In grades, yeah, in grades three through five, we have shifted to student-led conferences. This is where students share their goals and progress toward these goals with their parents. They share artifacts from their work where they write thoughtful reflections and they sit and talk to their parents. Student engagement is a huge focus at Essex Elementary and these are a few examples of play-based learning in kindergarten. These are a few more examples of high level of student engagement that you would see in a kindergarten classroom. These kindergarten students are creative, they're collaborative, and they are engaged. This active engagement also helps with developing their social skills. Teachers come up with so many creative ways to increase student engagement. The third graders have something, this month happened to be a poetry cafe outside their classroom where they get to check out books. It's set up like a little cafe. Each month, the genre for the cafe changes and it draws students' interest in a variety of ways. Students oversee the cafe and take ownership of this. Another example is in speech and language. These students are using hands-on activities in their speech sessions and they have a lot of fun. And the next slide, I would say, the past two years Essex Elementary has engaged in the Global Day of Play. This is just another example of why students are excited about coming to school. They bring games from home and teachers put out all kinds of random materials and students get to play. They play board games, create all kinds of things like tents and snakes and things in their classroom. And it's so remarkable, teachers really do enjoy seeing children socialize in this way and often get to insert themselves in a way that they can sort of help with some of the social development. Yeah, there's just some more pictures from the Global Day of Play. They don't look like they're having too much fun. There's another example of the third grade cafe. This is an example of students learning about the life cycle of the butterfly. And this over here is a fluency group where you see they're using hand puppets and they're reading, using the puppet to try to help develop their fluency. And lastly, the last slide, it's all about the team. None of this could happen without this most amazing staff. This picture was posted during Read Across America Week, showing all of the teachers reading their favorite books. I feel really honored to work with such an amazing school where all of the staff constantly puts the students first. And that is it. So, any questions? I hope you enjoyed our presentation, I'm sorry, I know we went over, we got a little excited.
Yeah, me too.
If we did, we timed it during the day, half an hour, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, no.
Anyway, so, that was fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah, you guys are doing some amazing work. I thought I would just open it up to the committee if anybody has questions and then we can go around the hall.
I just have one comment as a parent who did not go through Essex Elementary. Your presentation, more so this year, and I don't know why, really gives you, like, I feel like I had a kid who went there now. I have a real sense of what you do, the community aspect that you bring together is amazing. So, I mean, just keep going with what you're doing, it's pretty cool.
I loved the theme that you gave us, because I think it lent itself to, yeah, there you go. You know, when I started thinking about what Pam asked us to do, I was like, hmm, and then I thought, and it wasn't really hard. It took a little time gathering all the pictures, but all the pictures were there, we didn't have to run around taking pictures, we had them all, it wasn't too much.
It's amazing.
I had, like, just some questions that came up in my head. One, was that at the very beginning, you talked about ELL and just, it's not really a question for you, but do, how is our, has our ELL population grown? Do we have more kids coming in who speak English as a second language than we did before?
We didn't have any program when we started, we both started, and now we have a program and we have a full-time person. So, percentage-wise, it sounds very small, but we were probably under a half percent originally and now, I think we fluctuate between one and one and a half district-wide, which is very small comparably, but it's enough to keep a person running around K-12. Yeah, that's a, that's a big difference between where we used to be and where we are now.
My, I remember that we had, in one of my children's classes, there was a student who came in speaking no English and by the time that student left, they were speaking English beautifully and it was amazing what they did, so it's great. My other, everything was awesome, thank you so much. And then my other question was just, I remembered when we first started that community read program, it was, it was both schools, is it now just Essex does it on its own?
Teresa, can you help us with that? I'm not sure. I know it was both schools and at some point, I'm not sure, maybe you can.
It was hard to coordinate.
I can tell you, so, Teresa Whitman, Ait Loughgan Street, and I handled the community read this year and last year and sort of took it over the year before. So, two years ago, there was, this was originally both schools altogether. And then, 2017, I think it might have been, but it might have been 18. The two schools split because there was a difference in opinion of what books would be best serving that school community, basically. So, we decided to go our separate ways. The Hoover Fund has continued to generously fund this. The PTO puts on the event and then the school takes it and runs with the activities. So, it is continuing, yeah.
So, thank you for keeping your promise.
You're welcome.
We don't want to have to leave you.
Nope. I'm so impressed with this, I mean, I'm always impressed with presentations, it's just very good. What I liked about it is, you know, we've had some people coming here from the SED, doing SED evaluations about student engagement and student-led learning and it's just, I think when you look at the then and now, you really do see how students are acting in the classroom. And the, and then there's the aspect of expectations and not, I don't want to say discipline, but then self-discipline, to be able to follow expectations.
Versus rules.
Yeah. But to see how that has helped students learn how to get up out of your chairs in a responsive way, because I don't think I could hand manage a bunch of kids getting out of their chairs and moving around the classroom and doing all of this stuff.
Looks easy, right?
No, but I can't imagine one teacher standing and trying to manage all of these cats, right? So, it's impressive and I'm so proud of Essex Elementary, thank you. I also wanted to, I was also really happy to see how many police officers were in the photos, even though we only have one SRO. It seems like this investment, we're, I don't want to say it on camera, that we're getting more than we're investing, but it seems like the two police departments are so invested in this that we're really seeing more than we really anticipated.
I really think the person in the position is making a difference. And that's not to say maybe we would have found somebody else, but Andrea is so invested in the relationship aspect of things and I think that makes a world of difference, especially in Essex, because we're not connected to the Manchester Police Department. Not, I mean, through the schools we are, but, so she had to almost work extra hard to form that connection and not be off-putting to the folks in Essex and step on their toes and she did a remarkable job of outreach with that. And now, it's like, sort of like one big happy family and I sometimes forget, she's not an Essex cop.
Well, in all fairness, I do believe that the two police chiefs are both new and really wanted to make a commitment to the schools and their presence here and they want the kids to know who's, who to go to.
Yep, she is an incredible resource and beyond, I've worked with SROs before, but I think she's beyond my expectations in such a short period of time.
Yeah, she's just providing such a, it's a linkage, right? So, we just had our crisis meeting with our safety team last week and we couldn't, there were too many of us in the room. So, there were three to four representatives of police inspired from each building. But she's continuously now just sharing the information and closing the circle. So, where it would be Paul, Rye, Claude, and I are principal to one of the chiefs, it's, there is a communication continuity, the same way. That on top of her just natural skills, I think, of working with the kids, it's been absolutely phenomenal.
And developmentally, it's, she's done an amazing job, you know, it's tricky, a police officer coming in, dealing with kindergartners, first graders. I actually encourage her to wear a uniform, I'm not sure that's the popular vote, but I feel like if we're going to normalize the work of the police department, then why have her put on something else and not have her tools on her? And she did a remarkable job with the kids, because of course, they're a little fixated on tools that are hanging off her belt. And she just says, that's a tool of my job, you know, and then she'll deflect it to the tools in the classroom. And now, it's like a non-issue. So, I actually do like her being in uniform, because I think the kids just don't even think twice about it anymore. So, she asked me, she was very respectful, if you don't want me to, I said, no, I really do want you to wear it. And she's great, I can't thank you all enough for supporting that stuff.
Jennifer, I just want to say, I mean, as a parent of two kids who went through Essex, who've lived there a long time, I just, I think the work you guys are doing is phenomenal. I think, I really, I really get the sense from this presentation that you definitely, at an early age, set the tone and you set expectations and kids want to rise to those expectations, which I think is really important in a leadership role. And setting values, setting a vision statement, the compass thing, I thought it was fantastic. I remember the very first time we walked through the doors of Essex Elementary and seeing the core values right there. And kids really want to do well by each other and there's, you know, the staff and so forth, so I think that's phenomenal. I just, I think the community partnerships work that the PTO is doing is phenomenal, you guys are doing a great job. And I just, I'd really like to see the cultural inclusion piece too. I know we talk a lot about differences with disabilities, et cetera, but I think the cultural part of it is really, really important because I think we've got some challenges in the secondary in that area. So, I think adding that foundation for the kids is wonderful. And I also just was curious, are you guys still doing this elastic book sale and Field Day and all that good stuff?
Field Day is on the last day of school. Mr. March, the newer PD teacher, although he's not still doing it anymore, has changed up the activities, but it's awful.
Because that's a big community event.
It's a big community event. That's always the day when they dismiss that I just kind of go, huh, there's people everywhere. But it's a great, it's the last day of school, we, I'm not even going to say anything about the weather, because I don't want to jinx us, but it's a really fun event. The book fair is this week?
It's this week, Thursday, Friday, this week.
Yeah.
Yep, and there's a lot of parent involvement, all of these things we couldn't do without the parents, so.
And I want to also give a shout out to our amazing library downtown, because I think they've done a really good job of April and Deb of like really bringing the kids in and having tons of activities and after-school stuff, so. Anyway, I just, it does take a village and you guys are doing a great job, so, thank you.
You're a great staff.
Yeah.
You're a good staff.
So, any other questions, comments?
Just, I just wanted to, with all the, I guess, at times we can be focused on the school community very much on the cost and spending and the facilities and the infrastructure.
This didn't cost anything.
No, no, it's hard to.
Well, this, and this was just a good example of just seeing kind of the whole benefits side of it, so that was very useful, to see all the different ways of engaging, to me, it helped give a flavor, and we have a brief item on like the playground, I was going to say. And it kind of reminded me that the importance of a playground to kind of the community, to the environment in which all of these actions and interactions take place. And also the kind of taste, the village of why, especially with the PTO and the other groups, it's important that there is such a strong feeling of, we need involvement, this matters to us. And this was just a really good pressure, and it should have all of us have this work. Thank you for coming.
All right, thanks for.
Thank you so much.
Let us go a little over.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
See you all, good night.
Thank you.
Go make some coffee.
I know, I'll make some, yeah, I'll have to do that.
Thank you. All right, so. Go do your homework. Are you all finished?
There's not much that's changed.
So, budget update, not a lot has been happening because things are in stable condition, which is good. You know, we're continuing to monitor budget inputs. Typically, more of those changes start to happen as you get towards the spring on the personnel side. If there's some surprises of people kind of, you know, telling us they might be moving on. So, it's a little early for that, that's the number one budget input, the second biggest budget, but obviously, it's health insurance. We're going through the Health Insurance Advisory Committee Hyatt process right now. And we, we're talking about a number in our budget of six percent renewal rate and we're, that work is not quite done, so we're not quite there yet, to be perfectly honest, so, but it's within reach and.
Six percent, really, but for insurance?
Six percent is what we put in the budget, we said.
Oh, I was at seven, I did two.
We said that we were going from ten to seven and we wanted to go to eight and a half in the middle. But I believe we ended up, I thought we ended up at a six percent number, but I may be wrong, because it's been a couple of weeks. But no, we don't, there's nothing to take yet, we don't have it. So, but we're working with it and the claims continue to look better. And so, we met with our broker today and they said that we're in good shape. I think we're going to hit our budget target and maybe if we're lucky, we can do a little better. So, TBD, but that's going, that's going well. And then, you know, we're going to continue to monitor the next biggest input that we talked about. Budget season was the added district placements, so that's something we're going to continue to monitor. Actually, I was on a conference call today with the Department of Education about Circuit Breaker and the Extraordinary Relief, where you can apply for additional funding if you have a one-year spike. So, we're going through that process, that claim will be submitted by the end of March with some answer hopefully by mid-April. Certainly by Essex Town meeting, I think we should have a sense of whether that's coming through as hoped and projected. And we did also attend. And we did also attend a Department of Education conference on a different part of Circuit Breaker, which is just the irregular annual program, which has been adjusted to now include some reimbursement for out-of-district transportation. That's new. That's part of everybody hearing the many years of districts and communities saying that the state formulas just don't represent the current cost of doing business. So as we talked about, there's a phase in of that reimbursement into the Circuit Breaker program on a four-year basis. So what we were previewed was that a quarter of our out-of-district transportation costs can be added into the Circuit Breaker formula, which then gets reimbursed at a fraction and all that type of stuff. But that's, it's more, that's better. We do have a number in our budget already to, that assumes for that. Currently still believing we're on target, but it's really too early to say that. So I don't have a new update, other than to say that the Department of Ed is rolling that out. It is happening, and that's good.
So, Avi, you're saying that we may know more about the Circuit Breaker, the 279, in mid-April, or is that more in the fall?
Yeah, we're going to know about the extraordinary relief, which is money we'll get this year for this year, but it is significant enough that it has a significant bearing on how we stand going into FY21.
Okay.
Yep. And then we'll get the final numbers for fiscal '20, not typically until July. And those, that money comes to us quarterly in fiscal '21, a year, in a year, so that's standard. And that will have the transportation 25% reimbursement portion.
That quarter, that quarter?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Two questions about the extraordinary reimbursement. Is that, what would qualify as extraordinary? Is it a percentage of your total budget? Is it a number? What is...
Yeah, the formula is based off the fact that they expect your claims to grow 10% every year. And so if your gross amount grows, sorry, if your gross amount grows 25% or more in a single year, and your net, after taking out the part they don't reimburse, grows 25% or more, then you're in line for some reimbursement. So the first threshold is you have to have a 25% shock in a certain year.
Right. And is it only, I have another question about it. Is there, can you only apply for it in one year? Or if you had the same increase one year, and then the next year you also had an extraordinary?
If we hit another 25% in a subsequent year, yes, you could apply again.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
So that's the budget update.
Anything else?
I mean, it's ticking along, you know? So.
We might just end right on the nose tonight.
Wait, do we not have a playground?
Essex Elementary, I knew you forgot some.
Yeah. All right, Ken can do playground. Thank you so much, Avi and Pam. All right.
I'll keep it brief. The working group for the playground is chaired by, just as a reminder, Jessica Irwin and Jake Foster. Avi and Jason are, and Jennifer Roberts are key members of that, myself and Jesse Calm as well. Just to kind of recap where we started, because it was January, which seems an eternity ago. There was, we had the kind of the abrupt news and the closure. The parent, there was a lot of concern, parents, the community. Some of that is there, but I can see it's moving on to, okay, we've accepted the closure. As you saw the pictures, it's there, and there's energy and momentum for, okay, how do we replace and continue what was there? There's definitely going to be a lot of very high interest in vendor presentations, which I think are coming up next week. And Avi and Jason have done a great job finding appropriate vendors that are available for moving forward quickly that are already pre-approved. At the same time, there's, we're, there's a lot of exploration going on in the committee. One of the things is a desire to repeat the involvement from 1987. People are asking about that. I was shown a picture today. I know you can't see it, but it was a button that said, "I survived the Essex, I survived the building of the Eagles Nest, 1987," button that folks had. So it was an event that stated to people, the involvement wants to go on. So a lot of what's going on right now are trying to kind of understand what we're calling constraints of the rules around the project. Avi and Jason have met with ConScum around the proximater wetlands. We're trying to understand the roles, kind of the potential roles of the vendors, whether the vendors are designers, project coordinators, whether they can lead a community build. Also, things like if there is, if there are donations in kind of, or donations offered by the community, what would be the process to be able to accept those? And I said, "I believe that would come through us as the school committee." Pam, on anything, if there's, if there's a desire for community donations, they'd flow through us for approval of some sort.
We could probably get into discussion about some of what I've been seeing going back before that, if you do your report.
Yeah.
Because I have some concerns with the timeline that's laid out and...
Yeah, well...
Other limits we put on other projects and investments in the past, so.
So that was one of the questions also that came up. One of the key constraints is the timeline. And the goal is, the goal was, as we heard, was to get it in by September. And that's still, to be able to have it ready for the beginning of next year. And we're trying to understand, because some of these things, whether it's a community build or whether there's more input on design, there may be a playground. There would be a playground, but the question is, is it what the town wants? So some of that we can get into probably in the discussion. I'm not intending to voice, you know, where the community stands, because we're still learning. And really, and a couple other things, there is community input being collected. There have been surveys with the school. There's thoughts on taking that broader, but every meeting seems to be a little bit of a juggling, all the topics, to try and arrive at what the process is. And there has been a bit of work on researching other local projects that have incorporated some degree of local flavor. So, it feels in some ways a bit weird, because it's different from, we saw the results of the Memorial School Playground process, but it is a bit of a different process. It is a bit of a different approach. And I think it's worthwhile. I'm glad that we're being deliberate about this. So, that was my report. And Avi, if in case I'm misrepresenting or...
Just a couple of very nuts and bolts types of things, but they do have a bearing on where we're going. So we talked at the school committee meeting, where we kind of launched the idea of a working group about a potential timeline. And one of the things we said at the time is that we were going to have to go with a state contract approach, which is a method of procurement, where instead of doing your own bid, going out to bid for services, for construction, which we would need to do for a project of this size, without question, you can use the state's procurement that it's already done for vendors like this. There were a lot of great vendors on that list. We mentioned that there might be some technical issues. Did come to find out that the state contract by the, I think it's called the OSD, is the Department of the State that does that type of procurement, would not support our project because of limitations on construction labor. So it's purely an equipment program. It's what we learned from Memorial Project. Typically, it's about a 50/50 type of split between the equipment and everything else. So, so we went back to the drawing boards. One of the things we found, we have someone who's helped us with a lot of procurement work at the district, who recommended the Mass Higher Ed Consortium, MHEC, contract. They do a lot of pre-procurement under the same requirements for mass state laws. And districts are allowed to participate in them. We are a member of MHEC, and I've used them for other things like athletics. You may remember that acronym, because that organization was part of the MSBA Consortium for Furniture and Fixtures and Equipment, FFNE. So that was an option. So they have a contract which looks great and will allow us to have the whole project in there, which would allow us to not have a major move away from the timeline that we've been talking about. Although, you know, the timing is already getting tight, to be honest. But what we found was that, I think, three out of the four vendors that were on the state contract were on the MHEC contract as well, including Compan, who is doing the project at Memorial School, including Emmy O'Brien, who reps LSI Equipment, which is another one considered at the Memorial School, ultimately not picked. And one came off, another one came on. And so, right now, you know, we're sharing information about what their equipment brochures really are, basically what's in their inventory. Because with each of these contracts, you can say, going with this contract, here are the type of equipment you can get. And we need to make sure that everybody is on board with that process. Because if not, then really, that pre-procured approach is not going to work. We're going to have to go out to bid. Certainly, that is always an option, but that would be a change from what we've told you. We would not hit our September deadline. So going through those, I call that a brochure, but it's really a catalog, of potential equipment for each of the MHEC vendors is really the final step that I think the working group needs to do to make sure that the pre-procured approach can even work. And we're also talking about bringing in vendors to interview. And so, we spent the last meeting talking about some of the questions that we might want to ask, et cetera. So that's kind of where we're at. But I think the timeline is, you know, for six, April 6th was the proposed deadline to bring a design to the school committee that the working group has stamped with approval. Couple things on that in terms of progress. Jason Waldron has been continuing to work with first estate contract reps and now the MHEC reps to say, here's what we're talking about. Here's what our current existing Eagles Nest looks like. Here are some of the values that we've been hearing, because the working group has been getting some information from the community a little bit along the way. So he continues to give that to them. And so they're kind of drafting up ideas. We don't have anyone under Little C Contract with us yet. No one's been hired. So they're just kind of trying to put their best foot forward by saying, "Oh yeah, we can show you how, what good listeners we are and how adaptable we are." So that's giving the working group some things to look at, which they've kind of reviewed as well. And at some point between those, the catalogs and the interviews, hopefully we can pick somebody. But then, what I've seen with the Memorial School project, it does take several iterations and multiple chances to say, mm, take this out, put this in, et cetera. And there is, as Ken mentioned, a parallel track of getting community input along the way on various aspects, not just the design, but the feelings, and what types of connections do we want to make? Came from the old Eagles Nest, if not the exact look. What types of experiences do we want to incorporate? And then also this question of how, if at all, should the community be involved with any potential participation around construction? So there's a lot to do. I think we are under a little bit of time pressure, to be perfectly honest. It's a great group. And hopefully, the next March 9th meeting, we're going to continue to make some progress. But I think this last question of whether we can go with the pre-procured method and the MHEC is something that you need to be aware of. Because if for any reason that, you know, the working group decides that, no, these catalogs aren't going to do it for us or for the community, I think it's going to be a little bit back to the drawing board. And that would certainly, we'd have to say, you know, a September start might not happen.
And that's where, unfortunately, I missed the last session, but just watching the communications and the different activities that are going on is my concern and a question of clarification for the committee, which is, is the charge to work toward the timeline of a fall replacement? Or is it advantage input to get to that? Or is it to really examine what the process should be broadly? Because it sounds like we're going, that the first month has been spent kind of debating whether or not we're actually going to go down the state contract options path, whether it's MHCC or whether it's the state bid list, or whether or not we really, that isn't going to meet our needs or we're going to go beyond that. So is it within, is the committee okay with them going off track? No?
I guess, I have to, I have to clarify, Pam, because I, that somewhat mischaracterized. I think the past month has been, it hasn't been a debate so much as it's been, it feels to me like a lot more like an exploration of figuring out, we've got the state bid list, that doesn't work, MHEC works. What constraints are there?
Okay.
Does it go in the same place? It is taking longer, and that's, that's weighing heavily, I think, on everybody. I kind of put it down less as a debate, more about a, okay, what exactly is possible? Like, we didn't know, I think, up until Jason spoke with ConScum, would the playground be able to go on the existing spot or have to go somewhere else?
Oh, no.
And there were, there have been items, like there was the request, okay, can we drain the field at the same time? And it was, that got clearly pushed out of scope.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I don't mean to, there's definitely some debate and discussion going on.
And I have fielding questions as well about the charge of the committee. How is this going to work? Are we still working toward the time? So I'm just trying to make sense of kind of the inputs that I've had.
Yeah.
And I know now we're doing some exploration of other, and I think it's all great in terms of design. But April 6th is really coming quick, and we have only one meeting in between now and then. And then our next meeting is May 4th.
And I have to say, and I got to give Jake and Jess credit for it, they keep returning back to the, okay, here's the timeline. What are our things? If we say community input, is that a helping, and community input is everything from upfront, potentially picking from the catalog to doing a build to if there's something else? So, yeah, I'm, yeah. Go ahead.
I'm concerned that community input becomes a community trying to design a whole thing. And the reason that you have a committee appointed is that the committee is charged with doing that kind of work. And I just want to be mindful, and I know you know this. And I, I'm just worried that, you know, we gather input from the community and then we execute. And I just want to make sure that at some point, we have to... And this happened in the first building project, where we had folks who were very, who had experience in architecture, stopping the project to say, "We need to redesign the front entrance." And we gave them that leeway, and we shouldn't have. Because time costs money, and delay costs money. And so, I just want to be careful that we manage expectations and keep to our deadlines. And sometimes we can value input and move along. So, and I know you know all this, I just...
No, this is, it's a good recap, and I think it bears a response. And again, correct me, Avi and Pam, on this if you have input otherwise. Really, the community input to date has been somewhat limited. There have been participants from the PTO that have been at the working group meetings, and there's been discussion. Part of it is we're even trying to define what community input is. So we really haven't gone out, there's been talk, I mean, here's a survey. There's been talk with the students about getting that input, as Avi said, to provide. One of the big things that we've learned about community, community input at playgrounds often takes the former, as I think it did with the Eagles Nest, where there was, on the construction day, you substitute, as Avi said, it was a 50/50 labor and materials cost, where you substitute community labor for that. And there's, things have changed. There's the rubber. So it hasn't even, and everybody's very cognizant of it. We don't want to get to a, I don't think anybody wants to get to a vote on the slide green or blue.
Yeah. So, for example, one thing you could do is get community input about things that are important to you as opposed to tell us exactly which elements go where, which I think...
Yeah, I don't think we want to get...
Directional, but not specific.
And even then, and part of the community input was, is if that event, the build event was what mattered, or was a key part of it, then maybe that weighs in. We don't understand if a community build costs us more money, is even as much or saves money.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that yet. That's something I think we would find out after we picked a vendor. They'll all talk about, they might talk about it in the interviews, that we might find out about that then, too.
Because I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, one of the inputs that I think that folks concerned was given the budget and given the space, the, based on a per square foot, the new playground would be two-thirds the size of the existing one. With some back of the on...
So, yeah, and that brings up a broader, important topic, which is just that playgrounds, they're... The company that built Eagles Nest is still in business. They make wooden structures. They're not on the list. And even still, they're also not widely put in. And when we talked with our inspector, what we learned was that that style of playground had a, for lack of a better phrase, a heyday. That's kind of come and gone, even though they're still in business. So I think one thing that's important to say is that provided that we're not going back with that firm, which as of now, the MHEC or the state bid list is not, that's not happening that way, unless we go change that process, which we're not talking about currently, means it's going to be a change. And so that change is going to be, I think, a big adjustment. It's hard to move from the old to the new. I can tell you, the firms that are on both contracts are extremely experienced, reputable firms. They do a ton of work in this area with a lot of similar communities that really value play and, you know, student experience. And these aren't junky playgrounds. These are, these are good options that are available. And I think we have approved a good budget, too.
Good.
So I think we're in good shape in that regard, but there's going to be some changes in it. So I think that's just something that is going to be a part of our evolution from where we've been to where we're going.
Well, just to clarify Ken's question, though, is the new playground going to be in our current budget, two-thirds the size of the current one?
So, one thing that we learned from the report before was that, that many things have changed on the regulatory front since Eagles Nest was built. Accessibility is a big one. We heard clearly from our community how important that is, and it's... We heard clearly from our community how important that is, and it's important to us, and it's the law, and it's the right thing to do. So check that box. But then also, fall and use zones was a big thing that was in there. And that, the number of elements in Eagles Nest, when fall and use zones weren't a thing, how far you fall, do you land on a thing is what a fall and use zone is. You could, you are, you could not build that structure today for that reason. So we need, if you look at playgrounds all over communities and schools and towns, you'll see they're a lot more spread out. The designs we put up on the projector today for Memorial, there's a lot more space. So that kids do fall, they're not falling right on a piece of wood or on something that's, you know, going to break their arm or get them injured. And so, that's part of why it's time to move on, too. That poured-in-place surfacing really helps with that because it's absorbable. So that's a reason why you're going to see a lower percentage with the same area. Smaller number of elements in the same area.
But I thought it was the square footage was-
Thank you.
I thought the area, even the cost, would only get us two-thirds of the area.
The five, I think the working numbers that Jason has been talking about is about 5,000 to 6,000 square foot. That's based on the number of students that we have and the space that we have available and the job and use zones, I believe, I may-
Okay, because I thought I remember there being some that it was 7,500 square feet now, but these are some of the, just around, as an illustration of the constraints and even just speaking the language of playground design of the group.
So-
So can I just ask to clarify a question then, and ask the committee to clarify their wishes, which is, is the charge of the committee to continue forward being driven by the schedule for a fall build? Or should they continue to look? Because it does sound like alternate procurement measures are still part of the conversation being had at the committee. And if I'm wrong, just tell me I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, there are some, some of the conversations that came up, and I don't know that they, we haven't really polled the working group. We have some people here, remind me, Carol, I'm sorry, Carol's there, she could also kind of give your input on what you've heard as well. But there have been a lot of different ideas. There's been a lot of ideation, which has been very healthy. I think we agreed as meeting norms that we would start kind of with an open mind to things. And so one of the conversations that came up was around this idea of, what if we brought in an architect, for example, and then they gave us advice, and then you went to think about elements and that sort of thing? And that is very different from the MHEC process, or different from the process we're dealing with. You know, at Memorial, where we actually, we have an architect for that project, the architect did not design the playgrounds. It was assigned to the construction bid. We found a contractor who provides elements and design altogether. So even in that project, it wasn't done that way. So that conversation has come up. I have tried to remind people that that is not, does not fit with the pre-procured approach. And so that would require us to just stop that and change the timeline and go out to bid if we were to go there. So I think, again, we haven't voted on that. I don't know that there's an overwhelming support for doing that or anything like that, but it has been a conversation. So I think to Pam's point, if hearing from you, the timeline is of importance, rather than stopping and starting with the blue sky approach, I think that makes it very clear that we're not really able to go with, you know, the architect design concept, but more of a contractor who represents equipment, who does do design iterations and can take community feedback along the way, for sure. One thing we saw with Memorial School, Compan, who happened to build that one, is one of the people on this list as well, took many different iterations, and nobody really loved the design at first. It took a bunch of times before we said, you know, the working group was able to change it and hit the budget. So I think that state contract slash MHEC process can really work. And I know the vendors on there are extremely reputable and extremely experienced. So if you do, it sounds like people are on board with that keep-the-timeline approach, is I think what I'm hearing, but-
I'm curious to hear, can, I don't want to force you guys to talk on TV if you don't want to, but just like a thumbs up or thumbs, are you hearing from a lot of people that they just, that they would prefer to get something for September? Like people are ready to have a playground, or are you hearing more?
Well, that's when they were all here, Sarah, that one night, sorry to interrupt.
I know, but they've been hearing more between then and now. So are, what have you, what's the word on the street?
Well, I think I've been hearing that they're both sides of the story. And I also, I mean, some people want to have something by September, and other people want to know what we're giving up to meet that deadline. Like what, what, like is it just going to be a cookie cutter playground from the front of the picture? One of the pictures, it just looked very, I don't know, just bland. So I, I think that-
From the sample brochure?
Yeah, just, and not knowing that you could change some of the elements out. So I think that the presentation from the vendors on Monday are going to clarify that for a lot of people, where they say they can incorporate X, Y, and Z to be more maritime theme or more this, or. I think that, I agree that the state or the other program you were mentioning is probably going to be the way that everybody's going to go with maybe, like, the community involvement being shade or trees or artwork or something after and around the playground, is what I'm hearing, so. If, I articulated that right, I'm not sure, so.
No, I think, and I think part of this is figuring out, like, is that what else, if the community says yes, we want, okay, playground's there September, what goes on outside?
Yeah.
How would that be done?
I think they're great with getting the, you know, the playground situated, but at being able to put some community touches to it.
My opinion, my hearing and everything is a little bit different because I haven't been attending the working group meetings, but I was contacted by somebody on the working group with some thoughts and ideas to get my opinion. And my feeling since this all started, we had that great first meeting where everyone in the community was invited, and we were invited to brainstorm at length, both our wishes and desires and dreams for it, what we loved about the Eagles Nest, what we'd like to see moving forward, and also what would be reasonable community involvement. And at the end of that meeting, it, that was sort of not compiled all at once, but it was, my understanding was that it was presented as, do we as a group think this is a reasonable amount of community involvement? And it was an overwhelming yes. So my understanding moving forward has been that that is the, the track that, that was just being moved forward. I have a fifth grader who's going to be just fine for the rest of this year, and I have a first grader who, a first grade boy who needs to be running, jumping, moving on equipment, not just standing at the Gaga pit. And they've done a great job bringing in some extra, you know, games and things like that. But, so as a parent who was involved from that aspect of it, I would personally much rather support that community involvement feel being the after the fact, adding artwork, adding, adding other things as a grassroots effort. It leaves us more flexibility and it leaves the kids not without something as soon as we kind of can.
So what I'm hearing is that you think that we could work with the designers if we have them come and present, that people just need to see that they have some, that the committee that's making the decision has some discretion in terms of what equipment they pick, and that there is a community aspect of that where, I have seen postings where people have been invited to the community meetings, so I feel good about that, that there has been an invitation to come and contribute, and that, that the community involvement will involve perhaps landscaping, you know, not decorating, but like-
Hard work.
Touches that are personal and, you know, okay. That to me sounds reasonable, and I think we want people to stay on schedule.
I think it's important that we have a real charge at this, I mean, April, as you said, is right on the corner. And there has to be a charge from the school committee that is adhered to at this point. Didn't we already do that?
I know, but I don't know, it doesn't sound like, you know, tonight we're asking it-
I think nobody's waffling on that, I think that's all true. And I, and I agree with Teresa, we went to that meeting, people had a lot of input, they put all their things up, and at the end of the meeting, overwhelmingly, everybody said, "Yes, we think we can do this by September." Understand that we can do it also.
Yeah, there has to be a pencils down moment.
So, and that was, and we do have that, and that was actually, that was published, and that is good. And I think part of it is just, there's been, since that initial meeting, which was the end of February, or the end of January, it's been the waiting to find out what can, can that, can or can't that happen because of-
Yeah, I think the only last thing I'd say before we just move on, because I know, I've been thinking, I've been talking a lot about it. It's just that I think it will be challenging to hit the 4-6 design deadline as of today, but it's still within the realm of close. It's also very possible we might hit a May 14th, which could be, you know, a four-week differential. So we're going to, we'll do everything we can, but I just wanted to let you know, we're working towards that. We're definitely, with the pre-procured process, we're not far off.
I would just say, let's try to encourage, if you're going to narrow down to a vendor on the 9th, perhaps using some, like the same method that the building committee working group used, which is get people on a conference call, put it up on WebEx, and give them, they can make, they can pump out iterations rather quickly once you choose somebody to go forward with.
We did talk about-
So between the 9th and the 6th, my guess is you could have a weekly update and get the group, even if you can't all physically be in the same place, to give feedback on whether it's hitting the visionary mark.
That was discussed.
Important clarification, so by the 9th, we're going to have all three available vendors there to present and be able to select next week?
Well, no, not currently, to be honest, because I think, I, I don't set the agenda for the meeting, so I would need to defer it to Jake and Jess Uritz about that. Last I heard, there was discussion of bringing in maybe two because they take a while, and then following up potentially with two more. But that's, you know, I can follow up with them again to see where we're at with that.
I think that would be good, because if keeping them on schedule means, okay, we get all three or four vendor, available vendors in next Monday or next Tuesday and do it, then-
Yeah, what we saw with the building committee process is that it, it takes a minimum of half hour to interview anybody, really much more likely like 45 to 50 minutes. So if you got four vendor, if you have, excuse me, if you have four vendors on the MHEC list, you could be talking a three and a half hour meeting, and right now, the meeting's been an hour, two, hour and a half. So, and I don't know if people are available to do that, so that's a little bit of a TBD, I just don't know. I, I agree, we want to get the vendor selection process moving quickly. And to Pam's point, we did discuss about how we can make progress in between the meetings using emails, forwarding. And that's really what we have, we're so fortunate to have Jason in there. He's on the ball with these guys all the time, so he can get stuff to a point where he can share information with the working group, the working group can provide feedback and/or use conference calls, so.
Awesome.
We have some work to do to fine tune that project plan, in my opinion, but we're getting there.
So if I can summarize what I heard is, continue to keep aiming for a decision, a design by 4-6. Stick to the timeline, we're going to stick to the pre-procured, but there is also openness to community input or community customization after, outside of this, so.
Thank you so much, Ken and everybody. All right, and I'm sorry, I jumped ahead on my agenda.
No.
Um, any school committee comment? While we close out? Okay, all right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you so much.